Oh. All right, here we are, Robbie's World, episode one. I did not plan this, but it's Halloween. The year is 2020. For those of you listening to this in the future, maybe you're my grandkids, or who knows what, but Halloween is just not Halloween, apparently. It's uh, it's the night where you don't dress up and you hit your friend Tiger up who's running for city council and there's only days left and you promised yourself and you promised him that you would do your, your darndest to help him. And so here we are launching my very own podcast with my very first guest, Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick. How you doing, buddy?
I'm doing great. And don't worry, Robbie, this will only happen once in a blue moon. You have nothing to worry about.
I see, I see what you did there. It's also a Saturday night, blue moon. We're, yeah, it's just, uh, we, all the plans you thought you had for 2020 are out the window, but you, you had this planned to run for city council. I'm sure it's not the campaign that you imagined. But yeah, I appreciate you taking the time. We'll probably spend the next 45 minutes to an hour together. And I'm gonna try to get this out as quick as possible, just in case there's some folks out there who haven't voted yet. I know there's like record turnouts. Again, if you're from the future, Donald Trump is or was, yeah, is the president right now. We're not sure what's gonna happen in the next couple of days, but uh, man, just gonna be funny to look back on this. And uh, this is where we started and we'll see where we end up. Um, but yeah, I've known you for a while now. We started at PRC together on the board. We were the token millennials brought in and uh, you know, us and some of the gray hairs, we, we did a lot together and I recently actually left PRC. So this is even extra special, but now I can ask you anything I want because there's, there's no bosses or anyone to get mad at me or like.
While on the topic of PRC, I should just throw in really quick that I am on a leave of absence from PRC for like another four days or so, because the second that this election's over, I'm right back on the board. I'm in the vice president chair. But um, I've been on a leave of absence from the organization because they do not endorse. Um, and, and.
Exactly. PRC is neutral, but there's, there's no PRC here tonight. So we're good. Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. So now we got that out of the way. Um, I think I just wanna hop right in. Of course, people wanna know if that's your real name and what, and if it's not, just like knock that out real quick. And then tell me a little bit about what it was like. Are you born and raised in Pacifica? Or how long you've been here? And so, yeah, the name and then Pacifica.
It's my real name. I did have it changed back in 2009. I went before a judge and uttered it. And then I, here I am as Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick. I am born in San Francisco, but raised in Pacifica. Um, so you know, it was all about 30 seconds in San Francisco and the rest of my life has been here in Pacifica. I went to Tulane University in New Orleans for my college education, but um, aside from that excursion, most of my life happens right here in town.
That's awesome. So was it, was the name more of like, cause you're like mainly an author and stuff like that? Or what was the?
So um, as somebody who was big on studying words, cause I, you know, one of my studies was English with an emphasis in creative writing and a part of my fascination is the meaning of names, which kind of goes into my other major, which was religious studies a little bit because um, in, in many cultures, names are heavy. And when you study religious texts, the names have, are heavy meaning to them.
Gotcha. So this is a significant change for you and, and this is, this is your name?
Well, when I was looking at what the meaning of my name was, it was a really heavy trip. Um, you know, I've talked to other people, you know, I have a friend whose name was named Jesus and he was, you know, he prefers to be called Chewy. And um, it's not uncommon, but he, he turned to me when it was like, yeah, being named Jesus, that's a heavy trip right there. And so, you know, I wasn't quite named Jesus, but um.
Well, I'm Tiger now, so.
Pretty much. And what my name was, um, when I figured out what it all meant, it was a pretty heavy name to carry on my shoulders suddenly. And um, I'd already been studying William Blake a little bit, his spelling of Tiger and the Tiger and Songs of Experience is closer to uh, the way I spell it. And um, one day I was walking along and I was like, okay, so this, this name I was given is a heavy trip. And if I were to rename myself based on my defining actions as a person, and there I was with a six foot staff in my hand and big tiger on my chest.
You're the Wizard of Lindemar, I heard.
Kind of, I think I was off on some trip somewhere uh, in that moment in time. But you know, and that's asking, it's like, well, I twirl this thing and I'm big on tigers and J S actually comes from my original initials.
Because you had a big stick. That's awesome.
Yeah. Oh yeah. I mean, if you can, I don't know if you can see behind me, there's a stick over there on this shoulder. I think there's one.
It all makes sense now.
And they're all twirlable.
Yeah. And, and you were like Pacifica's Tiger King before Tiger King came out. So I love your signs and everything.
I'm the living Tiger King.
There you go. You can have a real live Tiger King on your city council. Thanks for tuning in. See you later. But okay, yeah. Tell me a little more about.
What it was, was I was trying to figure out something to live up to. And that's what I was already basically doing. And then on top of that, it was, okay, this is kind of a new blank slate kind of a thing where um, I'm, I'm ending um, the heaviness and what, where, where, you know, we all arise out of the dirt, you know, with the metaphor is plants, we're all rising out of the dirt. So this was my way of getting clean of that and starting in terms of this I can live up to and this I will live up to. And this is where I am now.
I like it even more now. That's something I've been meaning to ask you. So I'm glad we got that out of the way. Um, Pacifica life in the early days, uh, what was it like? What do you remember? Um, and yeah, we'll, we'll really get into the deeper things after that.
I mean, I, I, I went to Oddstad Elementary School back when Oddstad was a school and it was an elementary school.
What was the mascot? They're not Dolphins, right? What were they?
No, uh, horses, horses.
Like Colts or something or?
No, we were, um, I wish I could tell you what kind of horse, if it was a stallion or some, I was, I was young and horses are not a study of mine, but no, um, Dolphins were Ortega.
That's right, Ortega Dolphins.
I did kindergarten and first in Oddstad. Um, I had to go down south with the grandparents for the second half of first grade. So when we came back here to second grade, Ortega, which was then um, mixed elementary and middle, those were the Dolphins. Before they were Otters, they were Dolphins and I was a Dolphin. And then.
I was a Spartan.
Second grade.
I don't even know if Pacific Manor had one, but I ended up at Sharp Park. So, okay.
What was Sharp Parks?
Sharp Park Spartans.
Okay.
So you went Oddstad, then where after Oddstad?
So Oddstad, then to Ortega for second grade. Then I went back to Oddstad for third, fourth and fifth, because after second grade, Ortega went from being elementary middle to just middle. And then from Oddstad, I went back to Ortega for middle school. Finally, I wound up at Terranova. Go Tigers.
Nice. And that's why your name Tiger Jazz, the real story.
Yeah, that's it. Sure. Why not?
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm class of oh four at Terranova too, man. So it's good to talk to a fellow alum. Good to see you're making something out of your life and trying to better the city. You're, you're an inspiration.
Thank you. I.
And you said you went to college in New Orleans or where?
Yeah, Tulane University in New Orleans.
Nice. And so when, when you got back, is that when you started at Safeway and stuff? Or like, yeah, connect me from like the, take me from like, uh, you know, coming back after college to when I met you kinda, the, the fast forward version.
Yeah. Well, when I, when I got back from college, I had this like very rough draft of a novel in my hand that would later be Passenger. And you know, that was the hope and dream, but meanwhile I had student debt to pay. So it was um, time to pay this and I don't have a car. I don't even have a license and I need to get my act together now that I've, you know, had this um, very expensive education. And I walked my uh, patoot down to Safeway and got my, got my act together.
Sweet. And how long you been at Safeway?
Gosh, I've been there fourteen years, almost fourteen, fourteen years this December.
So I'm sure you have some stories. Is there any like, what's like the highlight of Safeway? I mean, I know we've talked a lot of shit about Safeway, but like, it's obviously, you know, being good to you for the most, or else you wouldn't be there. But is there like coworkers? Like the reason you love it? Or like what, what, I mean, the community members and stuff? But yeah, like what's so cool about working at Safeway?
That, that right there. Um, it, well, initially as I was kind of, again, creating myself from uh, these various parts of, it was like, okay, here's, here's this guy scattered out on the floor. Now I have to try and put them together into something. And um, with those pieces, I started by regarding Safeway as being kind of this, this new house of learning and this new um, kind of a monastery almost where um, my task was to um, be, be somebody just learning and this is the way. And that's, that's where it began. And as I was putting myself together in that place and learning how to become the person I wanted to be, cause when I began, I was not the person I wanted to be. What I found was I kept aligning with the community. It was, it was a community atmosphere. Um, it was community stores. This is where everyone in the community flocked to get their food.
It's very similar to, you know, cause I work, I started at Chili's. So it's just like, as soon as you get into hospitality, the restaurant, like it's addicting, it's crazy and it sucks, but then it's so rewarding and it's the connection too. So I think me and you bond a lot on that. And even though like, you know, we might be, we don't, we aren't exactly alike, but we, we do have a lot in common. So that's why I'm really excited to be talking to you and having this conversation with you. So uh, yeah, kudos to you for sticking in the job along. I heard millennials like change jobs every three years. I lasted four years at PRC. Well, five if you include when we were on the board together. So I had to get the extra year in there. But um, yeah, as far as I know, you, you know, you're like the face of Safeway back there. So keep up the good work and thank you for your service. Uh, I like that you tipped your hat, cause I was gonna go into like, I know, I know you do so much. And it's like, so what, besides that cool hat, what other hats do you wear in the community? I know you're on the planning commission. You're, you're on a little pause from the board of directors of PRC. Um, but we'll get into the planning commission. But is there anything else, like any organizations or any other things that you do?
PRC, I kind of float around a little bit. You know, I mean, I have friends in Rotary. I have friends and um, I'm, you know, I'm an author. I have, do have two books under my belt as per my education. Um, after that, I mean, it doesn't leave a lot for free time and I try.
Check all the boxes, the creativity, the work and the, the engagement. Yeah. But yeah, what else?
Yeah. Um, in terms of community, that's, that's most of it right there. And afterwards, you know, I, I try and enjoy myself a little bit in the time in between.
And, and be able to sleep and enjoy a nice Scotch maybe.
Oh yeah. Scotch is a relatively recent development and I do enjoy it. Although I, I just came by a nice, um, extra Anejo tequila that I'll, I'll get to spend the next year or two working on that one bottle. Cause.
Nice. Every city council meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So you know, three months, whatever.
Yeah. Depending on what the topic is of that night. Um, but yeah, I feel like uh, for this episode, again, I'm gonna try to get it out before, like if people haven't voted yet, hopefully they're, you know, they're watching this, but they should already have their mind made up. But yeah, can you tell me a little bit about like being on the planning commission? Cause I thought about getting involved, but I didn't go planning commission. I was gonna go like Parks Beach or, you know, something else, but uh, it just, it wasn't in the cards. But yeah, what is your experience been like on planning commission? Uh, and then we could talk a little bit about how you think that might, you know, help you, you know, plug and play into the city council. But yeah, like tell us about your planning uh, commission experience.
Yeah, it's, it's been great. Um, it's um, how do I, my planning commission experience is one in which I come into planning commission as somebody who has a, a background that's like way left field. Um, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not a craft trade person. I'm not somebody who's, you know, uh, who's designing any developments lately. I'm not somebody who's in the real estate market. I'm not somebody who's into the law around it at all. You know, I'm, I'm very strictly a community member and clearly, um, you know, the skills I bring in, uh, my creative writing talent, you know, finding a way to adapt that to planning commission, that's been the biggest trip for me because the place where I find my niche in planning is um, trying to address community concerns as much as I possibly can. So I, you know, because I don't have the background, I do my homework. When these um, packets come through, it's reading, it's studying, it's trying to understand it as, as much as a layperson possibly can, so that then I can go in and say, okay, as somebody in the community, um, here are my concerns as just a community member. And now I can listen to the community and, you know, try and articulate those concerns in a manner that hopefully rises to the level of I have some level of understanding, but I'm trying to meet the community also, who also has varied levels of understanding. And so um, that's what the experience is about for me is coming into it really just trying to get into the nitty gritty of will this fit into the neighborhood? Um, you know, yeah, will it, will it uh, be lawful? But usually by the time it reaches our desk, you know, it's, it's probably lawful. You know, and then after that, it's not just, well, okay, it's lawful from these angles, but is it lawful in terms of how it fits into the community? And that's, that's where um, I have my voice strongest is just really trying to articulate it from the side of, of whether or not it will play out in the neighborhood the way it should.
That's awesome. Is there a, we don't have to get into like a specific, cause I haven't been paying attention a lot to like uh, a lot of the planning commissions work, but like, is there a specific like story or something that you could share? Um, like a highlight, like, you know, trying to get like, as one of us is like a fly on the wall. Like is there something specific where like you look, um, has it been a year or two years? How long you been on the planning commission?
I've been on for about a year and a half.
Okay, cool. Yeah. So is there any like cool story that you can share? Um, about the planning? Or is it not cool? Is it boring? And there's nothing fun about it?
No, well, there's nothing boring about it. Um, there's cool stories, but like a lot of the time, it's navigating a lot of the public, you know, in some instances outcry, in some instances, I'm trying to think of just like a, a peer. Oh, actually, yeah. Um, we recently did one on um, uh, Paloma where um, dude is gonna raise his house up, like take an entire house and lift it off the ground and stick a shop underneath it.
Okay, I'm familiar with this. Yeah, tell me. Okay, yeah. And so, yeah, something happened where like it got approved and then it had to, it had to go because the, something changed?
Well, so when the project originally kind of uh, was the bug proverbially was placed in our ear was um, while we were discussing a general plan update and local coastal land use.
Updating the plan. Gotcha.
And it was about uh, adjusting, um, I think it was zoning so that it could happen. Um, and what staff determined essentially was for the nature of this project, it doesn't need to be that we need to majorly rewrite anything in the, the uh, general plan or the local coastal land use plan.
And then, cause I remember having, I was, I was watching city council that night, they had to approve it again or, right? And it seemed like it was good news.
Yeah, it was. Um, I don't remember if it came back to council again, cause I, I think that they determined that.
I think it came back to you guys. Not, I don't think everyone went back to council, but.
Oh, no, no. Okay, good. No, it didn't go back to council. It came back to us because what they determined was it didn't actually take an amendment to the um, general plan in order to make it happen.
Okay, sweet. But yeah, I'm, I'm a big fan of uh, that's Cotton Crest stations, AJ and his family. So yeah, cause yeah, that house is like one of the original houses and I've seen the plans. It's beautiful. And again, I'm an, I'm a north end, I'm a, you know, Manor Sharp Park kid. So I want, I want more cool stuff to happen, but you know, respectful, cool stuff. So that, yeah. So that's a cool story. Okay, cool.
That was a very cool project.
Put that on the website. You can check out Cotton Crest stations, little local supporting locals here. Um, okay. Anything else that you do for fun besides uh, you know, working your butt out, dedicating yourself to the community, the occasional uh, tequila? I mean, you go to city council, is that fun? Like, did you just start going to city council meetings? Like?
I mean, I do, I do have a little fun out of it. I'm, I'm not quite that big a nerd, but so for me, city council was um, the, the first time I showed up, it was because I was pissed off about something and I thought the best way for me to um, express that in a positive way was to say, hey, city council, um, if you do this thing, the community will be better. It was plastic bags. I, you know, it was, long story short.
I didn't think it was plastic, but I thought it was like uh, housing related. But okay, so those plastic bags that got you so angry, you channeled that anger to city council and look at you now.
It was cancer, which equals petroleum, which equals plastic bags all out of the ocean. So, and then when I was there for the first time, that's the first time I ever heard about PRC.
Oh, so that's, that's how you hear about PRC was the city council meeting?
And I was so moved that I had to devote like 30 seconds of my three minutes to say, hey, I don't know what this PRC thing is, but they sound great. You should totally keep them in the general budget.
That's awesome.
No, cause I was sitting next to friends of mine who had been helped by PRC. And I was like, oh, you were helped by this thing? I don't know exists?
Yeah. And that's the hard thing.
Thirty people get up, my friends included.
Yeah, we didn't know about it. That's cool.
And then the second time I went to council was regarding the Errol Chang uh, death. I'm gonna put it politely because you know, it's, but um.
Yeah, we can get into that if you want. Okay, for those of you listening at home, there was a.
You know, cause when I walked into city council chambers that second time, I was, you know, Ferguson was happening and I was, I was set to say, hey cops, what are you doing? And then I walk into this room and again, I'm, I'm kinda still foreign to city council at this point. I'm looking around, it's like, oh, there's all these cops. Maybe like screaming anger at cops right now is not the best use of my time.
Choose your battles there.
This is not that big a community. And um, and then the next step in my thought process was, and after all, I bet these people didn't set out that morning thinking to myself, boy, I hope we shoot some crazy guy.
Yeah. You know, you hope not.
Well, I, I've, I've been hanging around Pacifica long enough at this point, hanging out with the, you know, the boys in our town for long enough to figure out that I, I don't think any of them had that thought when they woke up.
Yeah, no one has an intent. It's an, it's unfortunate story. And uh, yeah, we're not gonna shift the whole gear here, but, but yeah, we can, we can expand on that uh, another, another time. And I'm working with actually some folks who are the social uh, was it? Social Unity Project. Oh my God, I should know this. It's up. Anyway, uh, they haven't forgotten that and they're, and they're doing a lot of positive in the neighborhood. And I'm sure you, you know, you've connected with Nicole and Shawna too. So um, yeah, for those of you listening at home, we will definitely be back. I'm actually having Nicole on here so we could talk about that. So that's a good segue. Thank you for, for volley, volleying that up for me.
But that second time on council, you know, that's when I thought, oh, I'm learning things while I'm here also. And there were other things being discussed. And it's like, oh, I could talk about things I didn't know were going on here in real time. And it was like, and oh, I'm trying to better myself and become more involved. And it seems like a, a really good way to become the person in the community I want to be is just to show up, learn about my community and every so often offer an opinion when I think I have one that might be helpful.
That's awesome. And that's, that's pretty much what you're basing your, your campaign on, you know, that you've, you've been doing this work, that you're prepared to do this work and you're a good listener for both sides and, and that you do bring that community, you have that finger on the pulse. And so uh, uh, you know, uh, best of luck to you. What's, what's it been like out on the campaign trail during COVID-19? Is there a campaign trail?
Yeah, the campaign trail is the sidewalk. Um, in some instances, there's, there's places, streets where there are no sidewalks. So the campaign trail is the street and you know, you just.
And you're gonna fix that. You promised, right?
Um, I'll fix the potholes, whether or not I can get a sidewalk on every street.
That's a little rough.
That might be a bridge too far right for, for my tenure.
Yeah.
Some of these streets are not very wide. Um, but that's, that's the campaign trail has been, you know, my, my uh, sole rubber hitting the pavement and knocking on those doors and largely to a positive reception and having good conversations with folk. And after that, it's having conversations with good folk like you who are willing to um, give me some time to share.
Totally. What, what was it? Uh, so did you, were you able to get to all the houses? Do you know how many doors you knocked on?
Oh yeah. I, I hit um, no less than 97% of the, the doors.
That's awesome, man. You're lucky it's only your district, because when I was part of Mary's campaign, it was like the whole city and I, and we, it was brutal. So how are your, how are your feet? Is there still soles left on your shoes? Did you wear the same shoes there?
I, I wear very good shoes. My, my uncle was an ARner, so he taught me about Brooks. They, they last so long, they take a beat and they keep on trucking on.
Is there a, what are, what were like the three most common things that were coming up as, I'm, I'm, that's awesome that you were able to go talk to folks. I'm sure you took all the precautions, but uh, what are the, what are the common things that uh, came up? What did you hear the most about? Good or bad?
Yeah. I mean, uh, the issues that were most discussed were um, cellular antennas, RVs and money.
Cellular antennas, RVs and money. That's, that's district four's concern. I like it. Uh, what did you have to say about those things?
I'm gonna fix it all the second I get in the note.
That's all you gotta do is say, everyone's been doing bad and I'm gonna fix it all.
Antennas were easy because as a planning commissioner, I'm the only planning commissioner that voted no on the antenna installation in Terranova. I'm one of two planning commissioners who voted no for the antenna installation over here on Redwood. And I've been hanging out at city council for long enough that I have an idea um, what a process looks like in order to tweak laws uh, for the benefit of our community. So if your concern is antennae, antennae, I get to say it.
Is that the plural, the proper plural?
I totally know Latin. No, I don't. Um, but the, the way to do it is, you know, you, you get a study session together first of all, and just say, hey, city attorney, um, tell us what our options really are to try and, you know, wrestle and these, these folks who, cause we need cellular service, no doubt, but I don't think we need a cellular antenna, you know, several feet away from a baby's crib.
I would love service in Rockaway on top of breakers if you can make that happen.
You know, you call Verizon, they'll be happy to put an antenna anywhere you want it. They'll just, they're just like candy.
It's so bad.
Not on Halloween, obviously for COVID, but in general, just spread it. No, but um, you know, that process of getting the study session together, finding out what we can do, bring it back to council to ratify law. Um, that's the process. And I'm, I'm already on the side of folks who have legitimate concerns. You know, my concerns uh, had to be aesthetic and nothing else, but um, I'm here to listen to the community again. And I have an idea how, you know, to figure out what we can do to make sure that the community is happy with their living situation and we have cellular service. Dichotomy, right?
Good luck. You're, you're bringing balance, man. This is gonna be the theme of the entire conversation. Um, any other cool stories that you can share? Uh, talking to the people during your campaign? Uh, like was there, I know you sent out some mailers and stuff or like, you know, any conversations you had or?
Well, did, so the, do you want me to do the coolest story or like the second coolest story first and then end with the coolest story?
Let's ask the feet, the people at home. No, uh, let's go, let's go, we'll save the best for last. So give us the second coolest story about running for city council.
Coolest story. I have a couple really good customer stories. Um, just they vote for me because of the service. And this one story was um, a gentleman was um, he was basically being scammed. I think it was a ransomware thing or something, but it was, you know, uh, buy a bunch of PlayStation gift cards and pay for our service with, to fix your computer with that. Um, and I, you know, I, I clued them in. It was, you know, clear red flag. And it was, you sure you wanna do this? Cause this really seems like a scam. Um, and it was.
Yeah, those are getting way more common.
Yeah, but you know, it, he was saved several hundred dollars in that moment in time. And I knocked on his door and he answered and he said, I don't know if you remember, but like a month or two ago, um, I was the one who you stopped from being scammed and thank you for that. And yeah, of course you have my vote.
That's awesome. He's like, I'll take three signs.
Cool. There was another, uh, so do we have time for two more or just one more?
Uh, yeah, I think we're good. Like I said, if, if Zoom cuts me off, we'll just uh, make this a two parter.
Well, so there's this uh, one lady who came to the store also. And she's just in my line. I'm checking around and she's like, yeah, you ever wonder if like those good deeds that people do randomly during COVID time ever go noticed? And she's like, by the way, there was this moment in time in which I needed toilet paper and you totally found me toilet paper in that moment in time. And I am totally voting for you.
I cracked the little things.
I just burst out laughing right there on the sales floor. It was great.
Were you like, do you wanna know my stance on RVs or anything? And they're like, no, it's okay. You got me the TP. Thanks, man. All right. Dodge that bullet.
Clearly she's not one of the ones dumping publicly, which by the way, is the major safety concern.
Oh yeah. See, there you go. You figured it out.
See, I do wanna talk about the issues.
We'll get to that.
We're gonna get into health and safety regarding RVs later.
Yeah, but you have to call motor homes so Anita doesn't get mad at you.
Well.
Just kidding.
I'll be happy to call them oversized vehicles, which by the way, because we're calling them oversized vehicles, is why the city's gonna get the living, um, who, what, why, why we may uh, stand a legis, uh, litigate, litigative risk, if I'm using there. Um, but before we go to the.
Give us the best story and then we start to talk about money and, and uh, I don't remember what the third one was.
About money and RVs. No, so I'm, after I knock on doors one day, I get this phone call and I'm just barely waking up and the phone's ringing and hello, you know, and there's this, this voice of this, you know, it sounds kinda like an older lady. And she's like, so you were on my house knocking on my door yesterday and I read your letter. And I just wanna tell you, young man, that I'm the one filling out the ballots for seven members of my household. And I'm happy to fill out those seven ballots um, for you. And I, talk about an amazing way to wake up to the day.
Hell yeah.
And just like, it, it hit me in the heart in this beautiful way. And it was just like, I think that might've also been the moment where I was like, you know, maybe this campaign's gonna be okay. Cause like, I can be neurotic a little bit and you know, obsessed on like what could go wrong a little bit. And, and in the beginning of the campaign especially, um, there was some anxiety going into it. And now that we're at the end, like there's a completely different anxiety.
Yeah, you tried your best, win or lose, you know, you got out there.
But you know, it's like, okay, I know people are voting and I have no idea what, and I just wanna find out, can I find out? But in that moment in time, I think that was a major turning point. And it was like, well, if this is how I get to wake up, even this time, um, I can calm down a little bit about, you know, what my odds are and just, it was just the coolest, that was the coolest moment.
So you, did you, you left, you left notes? Uh, that's a, that's a cool touch, like places that if you didn't, didn't, yeah, if they answered, you just wrote like a quick little note?
Well, I have a, I had a letter that I typed up.
Okay. And so you leave that whether or not.
I hole punched them and had the rubber bands. And so if, if they answered, I handed them the letter. And if they didn't answer, I would just leave it on the doorknob. Um, and I would usually write on it, sorry, I missed you, or you know, to my neighbor, depending on the circumstance. And I wanna make sure it always had the personal touch. You know, that's the reason why I walk district. You're gonna know that I care about you. Whether or not you decide to vote for me, I got you. But um, if I don't show you I care every way that I possibly can think to, as is my nature.
Yeah.
Why should you vote for me? And so I, I did everything I could, uh, you know, show my district that I care and I'm here and I'm doing my best to do it right.
Nice. And I'm sure they appreciate for that, whether they know it or not yet. Um, I totally spaced on the third, it was antennas, money. Was, was it RVs or what else? Okay. Yeah. I mean, if you briefly wanna just give us like a status update, um, a lot of my friends. Okay. Yeah. I mean, if you briefly want to just give us like a status update, um, a lot of my friends that are listeners, maybe they're not from Pacifica, like, so yeah, can you give me like a three to five minute recap on kind of how it's going, where it's at? And then we could even talk about a little bit about possible solutions or just, you know, resources. We obviously know that, that route. But yeah, so what's going on in your district about it with the RV motorhome, oversized vehicle issue?
Well, right now, um, since they just repaved, uh, or paved over Terranova and Oddstad, that greatly reduced the places where RVs can park. And lately in particular, I, I had been seeing one in particular that was still there. But I, I don't think I've been seeing it lately, but I haven't turned that corner recently. So forgive me, cause I'm, I'm not, I'm not one of the close watchers of it. But it, it seems like the law has been implement, uh, the law has been written, the law is being implemented. I think it's gonna take like around three months for us to really know what the rhythm of that law looks like and whether or not it's effective. And then we can kind of, okay, is it working? Is it working the way we want it to? Or do we need to rehash it to the point of finding the next step in our solution? But as it currently stands, uh, if a street is not wide enough, an RV cannot park there. My understanding is there needs to be signs up before enforcement can take place.
Yeah, the city figured it all, figured it all out and are all the signs up? Is that what we're saying?
I'm not sure. Um, I haven't seen a lot of signs in my district.
Yeah. Cause I see them over on Oceana, like the hot, the hot button places, but it's like, are they everywhere, you know?
Right. And that's, and that, that's, that's a question in my mind. Cause they can enforce or can't they enforce if they're, you know, how close does a sign need to be? And it's just, I'm, I'm still learning too.
It's all still kind of new, but stuff, you know, the city council, they tried, but you know, ultimately it got shot down just because of the majority that's on city council. And that's just the way the cookie crumbles, but.
The, the solution they found was to do it this way by writing this law and we get to see what the effectiveness of that law is.
Okay, cool. So for those listening home, it's, uh, there's a law, there's signs. Let's give it some time to settle in and let's see, see how it's going. See if we need to adjust.
Enforcement it looks like.
And continue to help those folks. So do you have solutions? Obviously this is an easy answer, but you know, for the folks living in motorhomes, or the folks living in their cars, or even, you know, the folks out on the beach, the, you know, just the unhoused in general. It just amazed me how many people in the community don't know this answer, but like what, what can we do to help those folks? The people who don't want to go up against the angry, angry, you know, pitchfork mob and they're, all they're worried about is the RVs, but like, you know, people who want to help, people who are okay with calling themselves compassionate. What, what, what can we do?
Number one thing you can do to help at this point is to reach out to PRC. Because they're the ones who are equipped with the tools to help. Uh, we just started the unhoused on the coast. Do you know the official name?
Oh, I think it's unhoused on the coast outreach. So UC outreach, but essentially it's homeless outreach. So yeah, right before I left, we, we hired two, two folks, Daniel and Alan, I believe. And their job is to just literally like field calls and go try to get people housed. It's just really hard on, on the coast because there's no, there's no place for the, there's no housing and there's no shelter. So yeah, contact PRC is first step.
And it sounds like they got hired just after I took my leave of absence.
That's true. Yeah. So you probably didn't get that memo.
No, I didn't. Um, but so the, the first step is to reach out to PRC so that we can reach out to the, those who need help.
Yeah.
Bottom line, cause you know, that's, we are the first line of defense. And if we don't know what's going on, then we can't try to help them.
Yeah. And they're the trained professionals, you know, because obviously, you know, I spent time with PRC, so this is a, a good plug, but it's a natural one. Before you could call the police, but the police, they know about it, but they can't do much about it. They work with PRC. They meet with PRC, I think once a week or at least once a month. So it's PRC, the homeless outreach team from the county and also the police. And now PRC has its own homeless outreach team. So the teams got even bigger and we could even, you know, they could help even more. But again, it's not like, you know, someone's in RV, you knock and you offer them housing. Okay. You know, get off of the property. It's, 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 it's way harder than that. You know, I'm not a, I wasn't a, excuse me, a counselor, a case manager, but the best thing you do is let PRC know what you see and, and let, let, let the experts help. Also if PRC's closed, you can call two in one. That's like San Mateo County Emergency and they should be, they're like a director. They can tell you what you need and where you need to go. But yeah, reach out to PRC. Um, I'll, obviously this podcast is gonna be about a bunch of stuff, but info and resources. And so, yeah, that's great. Thank you for kind of catching me up and vice versa, I guess, on, on what's going on. So.
By the way, one last little, um, you know, getting back to role on council. Cause Sue Vatterlaus is trying to push for the RV park on, for me, the other side of town.
Oh, Francis, San Francisco RV park in Pacifica?
Yeah. And, uh, you know, she, she has this lovely idea of five dedicated spots in the RV park.
That'd be awesome.
Where, um, we can transition folks off the street immediately so that they have a stable place while we try and help them find housing. And, um, again, that's a great place where the city could connect with PRC and the RV park. And, um, I think that by establishing those connections, um, that's another great tool that we could have to help folks. And I'm, I'm really hoping that goes through.
That's, that brings up a good point. The PRC has been doing this work for, you know, over almost 50 years. And so I'm glad to hear that Sue Vatterlaus is actually more engaged now because before she was kind of like, oh, I don't want to hear about her. Kind of, you know, exaggerating how many RVs are actually, but the fact that she's actually putting some stuff down on paper and maybe she's trying to knock on those doors now, um, that's a win. So we, we take those, you know?
Yeah. I think that Sue's been torn. Um, and I think that, you know, a lot of times when somebody utters a number, that's a little bit, a little bit exaggerated. You know, I, I think that that sometimes comes from a place that's, that's very frustrated because you know, for me, it's, it's about articulating what those two viewpoints are. So I kind of put on the table and I can see where there's synergy. Whereas some folks, um, you know, it's about knowing that there's two viewpoints and just like wanting to fix it, wanting to fix it now. And you know, when you're frustrated by, um, the sense of urgency, which can be a very good thing in a lot of instances, but when you feel a sense of urgency in two directions and, and then it becomes a war between those two urgencies rather than, okay, I see two perspectives. Let's put it on the table and figure it out. I think that that's where some of those numbers might, you know, just start kind of automatically coming out.
I think the pressure was getting to a lot of those folks.
Not necessarily because someone doesn't care. And I'm, I'm not here to argue on behalf of somebody.
Oh, for sure.
But, um, you know, I, I, she, I've hung out with her enough to know that there's a heart in there. She cares. And my best guess would be that, um, she had this disparate sense of urgency and, um, it, it did not show the best face as often it doesn't when we become ridiculously frustrated with an overwhelming circumstance.
And this has been one of the, the hot button topics, you know, uh, besides like what sea level rise, I feel like the unhoused issue. And this is, it gets not just Pacifica. Everyone says it's not just this city's issue. It's, it's a global issue, but you know, Pacifica only has so many homeless folks. We can, we can solve homelessness if we just put our head together in Pacifica.
What also makes Pacifica different from a lot of other places? Cause you'll hear like, well, why do we have to have RVs when they, those towns don't have RVs? Those towns have shelters. That's the answer.
They have parking lots. They have, they have, uh, support. They have funding. They have, you know, it takes a lot of things to happen, but.
So long as we don't have a shelter here or anywhere on the coast.
Yeah.
It's, it's illegal to outlaw homelessness. That's why these, these legal gymnastics were done to find this safety measure to try and solve the problem.
Yeah.
Because it, it is illegal to outlaw homelessness.
Especially, yeah. Cause if you don't have a place for them to go, right? That's, that's the biggest, yeah.
I, you know, again, I, I've done a little religious study work in my life and, um, you know, without subscribing to a particular religion, it seems like there's this common theme that we should do what we can to help each other. It makes life better. You know, that, that's often the message behind the God stuff, you know, God tells you to do it because it makes life better. And it really makes life better when we figure out how to coexist with folk. And it, that's what makes it hard because on the other hand, you know, it, it really can be a, a situation where we give what we don't have and then that hurts us.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where it all, you know, a lot of these anti RV, I think you said the pitchfork crowd earlier.
I call them the pitchfork mob. I don't know if that's official, but PMBs, you heard it here first.
There's certainly been some anger going on.
Pitchfork mob, sorry.
But I, I think, you know, when I hear a lot of the frustration and a lot of people's voices regarding RVs, it's not because of how anti RV and anti homelessness is as so much as, you know, they really wish they could do something to help them. And they really don't see a way that they can right now. And that's really frustrating and really hard. And like it, in part, it's conflicting with their own, their own internal place. Cause it's like, I know that I should be trying to figure out a way to help my brother, but I really can't figure it out. And my brother right now seems to be hurting me. And now I'm really conflicted inside and that makes me angry.
That's the thing. It's the, the fear and the anger and the conflict, but some people like choose love and they don't do hate and compassion is not, um, you know, a sign of weakness. So it's, I don't want everyone to agree on things, but when I hear certain things, I read certain things, I'm like, I, I couldn't try to come up with those words against another human who, you know.
Yeah.
It's just like you, no one should ever look down on someone else, but I don't know who, I don't know who hurt these people.
Out there on the, but that's, you know.
Yeah. And there's, there are fake profiles on Nextdoor. There are, it's, it's, and Nextdoor is backed by the real estate industry. So I think it's all connected, but. Yeah. Well, yeah. Cause their, their ads, uh, they were trying to get ads and they opened it up to real estate agents first. And so like during, like during the last election, a lot of the folks who were more on the progressive side, not accepting money from like, they were getting flagged. So it's, it's just interesting how it's all tied in and, you know, we don't have to get too deep, but you know, it's, Nextdoor is a business. Real estate industry is a business. People need homes. It's, it's kind of all connected. But if, I just put more love out, just fuck hate. That's all I'm trying to say. Don't hate on people.
For me, putting love out means also, you know, when I see somebody angry, I try to understand where that comes from. And it's, it's seldom from a place of hatred. It's usually from a place of, I'm frustrated because I want to do something. And I don't know how to do it in the best way possible. And so I'm just going to vent that frustration because now that's what just overwhelms me.
You just put the hand out. You're like, nope, I'm not hearing it. Why, why do people equate? And I don't know if you know the answer, but why is it like, uh, RVs bad? Like my home, my home, why is it always about their home values?
Well, so you know, home value is a thing. Property value is absolutely a thing. And you know, if, if I've sunk every last penny into my house and my retirement is getting to sell this and you know, moving off to someplace where the cost of living is substantially less as it is in most of the country at this point. You know, it's a big deal, uh, from that level. And there's, there's a livelihood level, you know, it's somebody else, is somebody else hurting my livelihood? But also there's health and safety issues going on with RVs. Illegal dumping is absolutely a thing. I have heard firsthand horror stories about, um, places, substances that were once in RVs should not wind up. The creek is one version. There are also other versions and you know, never mind disgusting, which it is, you know, there are diseases that happen.
Yeah. But that's not, but then they, those folks equate it to all the RVs. And it's like, no, I just, I just saw a new video where it's like a girl went to Terranova and now she's like killing it at some prestigious college. And it's like, no, she's not shitting in the creek. So it's just like, I hate how people just, you know, they broadcast that stereotype. So it's like, can we just focus on the good and trying to help people rather than that one bad? One thing, but yeah, there's stories on both sides, which sucks, but I just hate how extreme one side is over the other. So.
Yeah. But you know, it's like, the, the other side can be extreme too. There are members on the other side who, you know, have their, all RVs should be allowed to stay indefinitely everywhere.
Cute little grandmas who like are dedicating their lives to social justice. So how can you get mad at them?
You can get mad at them if, you know, they're, they're ignoring the very real health and safety concern.
That's true. And this is what you're talking about, tearing both sides and, and bring it to the table, not getting frustrated, not feeling the pressure, not lying about the amount of RVs in town and really if you're dealing with the facts and, and get done. Okay. I feel like that's a, that's a good.
We had the up task force.
This is the final words on the RV topic. So, cause I want people to keep listening. I guess this is it. Yeah. Give it to me.
Well, yeah. And the up task force and the way that was undermined, that's the one that pissed me off.
Yeah.
Cause here's a group of people literally from, if anyone wants to accuse Chris Redfield of having a pro RV bias.
That's what I'm saying. He, I'm proud of his, his arc, his character arc.
Right. But you know, he doesn't end up on the other side of that arc with like this, this warm and fuzzy cuddly love for all RVers. He just like is somebody who again, is reasonable, is willing to see both sides of things and say, well, you know, here's a solution that even I think I can go for. And that's, that to me is the coolest thing.
But some people just, you give them an inch, they take a mile and they'll never think, they'll never think otherwise. So hopefully when you're on council, you could, you could, uh,
There was especially one, one guy who like, didn't want the community to actually try and talk to each other and find a solution. And so unfortunately that guy was very good at undermining what should have been civil discourse and the public having an opportunity to actually find a solution.
But guess what, Tiger? He, he doesn't have his own podcast now. He doesn't, we're fighting fire with fire now.
Well, I, I'm not naming names and I'm not accusing them of.
But, but let's talk about, uh, what do you think about the Tribune being sold? How do you feel about that?
This is a little dangerous for me.
Okay. Well, I was trying to get you out of the RV conversation, but I was just gonna have, try to end on a good note that like now the Tribune might actually.
I'm very happy about overall. No, I'm very happy about overall. Um, there were, there were, uh, you know, the, the Tribune felt a little anemic by the end. I'll, I'll let that be my, my polite criticism. Um, and I'm really excited that, uh, the Tribune now has an opportunity to get back to a lot more community story. You know, this is, the Tribune was the place where I came out as Tiger Jazz Twirl's big stick. You know, that's, that's, that's the place where my name.
Yeah. It needs to feel like a hometown paper again. So I think the folks, I think it's like.
Really? You think my name is story worthy? Really? Cool. Okay.
You see me.
But you know, who, whatever the next like really cool down home, there's a thing happening in our community story is the Tribune is about to be in a position in which it can happen. And that, that's really exciting to me.
I was seeing online, they're gonna bring back like little cartoons. Uh, I think her name's Deb Wong and she's kind of been like testing out the cartoons in some of these years, but like, yeah, like we're in a fishbowl, whether you like it or not. So things that don't work somewhere else can definitely work here and vice versa. So yeah, I'm excited. And this is, you know, this is my way of contributing to the media and the news and the info and the resources. So, um, that, that's pretty cool. Okay. So I think we covered the three, like you think those are the three things that people listening at home wanted to hear your opinion about?
Oh baby. We did talk at all about money, by the way.
Oh, I just assumed we weren't gonna have any. Okay. Real quick, what's the financial, how's it, how's it? How's it looking for Pacifica, uh, financially? And, uh, what do you think you're gonna be dealing with once you're elected? What, what, what were they worried about? Like Pacifica just needs more money and we're, we're fucked or what?
Well, we've always needed more money. Um, on the other side of COVID, um, we're, we're gonna see what we have to recover from first and foremost. But you know, for me, um, COVID or not, my focus has been on Palmetto a lot. Um, that's where we've been.
Oh, you mean Main Street, Pacifica?
Yeah, exactly. That's where we've been investing the planning, uh, time and time is money, right? So we've been investing the physical infrastructure. And I think in, in this is, this is key. I think it's the least contentious part of town to, you know, make things happen. And I'm, I'm willing to look at other places too. I want to bring money in, but I think that we can make Palmetto more happening than it currently is.
Yeah. I'd like to see Palmetto, uh, do something, you know?
Yeah. It's where, where we can have a little business, have a little housing. That's, that's, that's where my focus has been. Cause that's immediately where we can agree and where we've already headed a long way down that road of making it happen. And I want to see it through fruition.
So you shared that with, with folks in District Four? That's not Palmetto, obviously. And, and they're, they're into it. They'd like to see Palmetto.
Yeah. Cause the punchline is potholes. And you know, we, we need to get roads fixed somehow. And, um, it's like, how can we get more money? Tax revenue. People don't want to be taxed. What if we have business?
Yeah.
Where can we have that?
But then now it's like, how do we get businesses? How do we survive during COVID? Like, so it's like, we're gonna be up against a lot. Are we gonna, are there gonna be a lot of cuts next year? Or like, have you, like budget wise have?
I have no idea.
I'm assuming, uh, you know, a lot of businesses weren't open, so.
So far is like $2 million shortfall for the city budget. Frankly, you know, I, I, I've not been involved with the city budget from that side of the table, you know, that's, it's one thing to see the budget from the council chambers and the audience. It's another thing to be the person looking at whether or not we're thinking about cutting.
Gotcha. And there's a lot in between those conversations, obviously from.
A, a lot, you know, I do not wish to cut anyone, um, but I don't know what it looks like.
If anything, I think the city needs to hire. Like there, there's a couple of people who retired. Some people moved. So, uh, shout out to the city staff for, for all their hard work. We're very.
Amazing. Over and over again, uh, under like such extraordinary conditions.
I'm just like, you have no idea. These, these poor people who are, aren't even, half of them aren't even from Pacifica. They're like, oh, what a lovely place. And then they get in, they start working at the city and they just have to deal with like the worst people through email, but then they still have to get their job done. And then you throw the election on top of it. Cause that's where, you know, it's city hall and everything. So.
I, I would hope that anybody getting involved in city governance, be it, um, on the political level or the staffing level. I, I think there, there's not a one of them that expects that they signed up for a place where everybody contacting them will always be happy.
Yeah. It's all rainbows, butterflies, sunshine here in Pacifica.
Yeah. Nothing but, you know, but that's, you know, at least speaking from my experience, I'm excited to be able to talk to folk and try and help them. That's, that's why I'm signing up. Right now, whether or not I'll be successful, I, I wish I had that crystal ball to tell you, yes, I'm going to be the most successful of, but. That's, that's why I'm signing up, right? Now, whether or not I'll be successful, I, I wish I had that crystal ball to tell you, yes, I'm going to be the most successful of us. But it, I'm, I'm here because I think that, you know, between myself and the other two candidates, odds are best I will be able to help, uh, in a way that they won't and to the betterment of our community. And that's, that's the bottom line.
Uh, since you did bring up the other two candidates, I know, um, there's two folks, uh, one's more on the progressive side and one is more on the pitchfork side. Real, like I'm assuming backed by the real estate industry. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, so there's three of you, right?
There's three of us and yes, one definitely has real estate dollars coming into their campaign and the other definitely has a Pacifica Progressive Alliance dollars coming into their campaign.
Got you. So in my opinion, and I might be completely wrong, I feel like two of you might split the vote and then the, you know, the, the, the real estate one doesn't have competition because there's not another real estate. So is that a fair assessment? Is that something you thought about? Is it? Cause honestly, I feel like it's your race to lose, but, uh, uh, yeah. What are the odds of you splitting the vote and potentially that the other person winning? Or how do you see it?
I see it as though any of us could win potentially. Um, and there's, there's good reasons why one would vote for any of us. Although I think that the best reasons of course are in my campaign. But I think that, um, uh, I'm, I'm the moderate, right? I have people, you know, somebody traditionally like Ian Butler might support a progressive candidate, but he's supporting mine. Somebody like, um, Kathy Maresco, at least, you know, the way people think about her might support, uh, so a real estate candidate, but she's supporting mine.
I didn't know that.
John Keener, although John Keener is also supporting monetarily March Davis to equal footing. But you know, again, he's somebody who is also supporting my campaign. So I, my, mine is a campaign of unity and that's, that's what it's about. And for me, I think that my message is largely, you know, if we want this fighting to stop, then we need to stop the two sides thing.
And that's why I'm here. Stop picking fighters from each side. Let's, let's try something different with Tiger here.
I kind of agree with you, like the progressive candidate probably, um, in our community. But see, that's the thing. Cause in, in the back of the valley here, there's a lot of folk who are concerned about property value. And that's, that's a thing. And so I need to understand that where they're coming from. That's the thing. And, but in Pacifica in general, yeah, oftentimes it's the progressive candidate who probably outweighs the real estate candidate a little. I think that I'm here to say, you know, I'm, I'm not about a side, I'm about Pacifica. I'm about what everybody is saying and finding those solutions that work for both sides and stopping the fires from erupting before they do. You know, be it, uh, rent control, which was, you know, that side kind of started that fire in town. Or the RV issue in which that side started that fire in town. It doesn't matter what the side is. I can usually see it coming from down the road and say, look, if we're going to do it right, this is the way we do it. And that's, that's my thing. I've just been watching and sometimes going, oh, well, this is what's gonna happen next. And it's not gonna be good.
Yeah.
And then they walk right into it. Every, it's like that horror movie where you're like, no, don't, oh, don't open the closet. Don't open the closet.
Don't run upstairs. Don't, don't run upstairs.
Yeah, you did it. Duh.
That's a great analogy and we might even clip this. So happy Halloween, everyone. Tiger Jazz just brought an analogy of city, the city council campaign is essentially like, uh, repeating the scary movies. So don't do the stereotypical stuff like running up doors or asking who this is or whatever else, you know, going into the garage when it starts like, let's try something different here. Um, I really like what I hear and I'm not just saying that. Because you, you've, because you've been already doing the work and because you're from Pacifica and because you care and all these things we just talked about, that's, that's how you can see around corners. It's very similar to some of the businesses, you know, that I, the way I run my business and the way I'm kind of doing this podcast. Like I know where we're headed and 10 times out of 10, we get there, even, you know, the work we've been doing throughout these years. Because a lot of people are just seeing one side and they're in their echo chamber and they're all hearing, yeah, I'm angry too. And then it's just like, you realize, you know, you might not even be like the, uh, the loud minority and not, not, not the quiet majority in a sense. So I feel like you are good at both sides and you have relationships with everyone. And I love that you live, obviously you live in that district. So you got your finger in the pulse. Then you went and you knocked on doors and you had these conversations. And, um, I mean, you have all the answers. So I, I can't see why you wouldn't be the man.
Wouldn't go that far.
Tiger has all the answers. His phone number, six, five, zero.
I, I can answer whether or not he answers. I'm gonna try.
Yeah. No. And, and sometimes carrying and trying is, is what it takes, you know?
If someone's honest, that's all they can offer.
So yeah, I, I like what you had to say. Um, so just to make sure that we did cover the money situation, uh, you see Palmetto as being maybe, uh, one of those swords that we can pull to, to try to help Pacifica rebuild and get reimagined and.
That's the starting point, you know, from, from there. We'll see, but we need it to work someplace first. And that's the place where the odds are highest of it working. We've invested and it's as neutral a territory as we have. So that's where we start and, um, we make sure that that comes to fruition. Cause after all that love and work we've been pouring into that area, that's the place to make it happen.
Yeah. Those green bike lanes and those lights are top notch bud.
Yeah. And so let's, let's like bring some people to walk around restaurants so they can enjoy them.
Exactly. And then, yeah, who knows how the shapes of the restaurants will be, but, uh, you know, I'm trying to get breakers back open so that I can contribute to this great city again, man. I'm sorry.
Yeah, right on.
Okay. So if people are still with us, we're at, uh, 10:54, uh, you know, fuck it, we're gonna just keep on going. I put out, uh, some feelers and said that I was gonna be interviewing candidate big stick here. So we're just gonna kind of rapid fire some questions from, uh, community members. Uh, I would say most of them are District Four. So these, these, you might be people you already talked to, but this is, uh, the things that were on their mind. And, um, feel free to answer as freely as you want, but just keep in mind there are a lot of questions and I think these are all pretty good ones. So just your quick takes on, on what you think. So, uh, here we go.
No, yes, no, yes, maybe, and yes.
You're cool. You're cool. You're cool. Um, okay. So let's just hop right in. What do you see as one of Pacifica's strengths? What's a Pacifica strength?
Pacifica strength? We're, we're gorgeous and we care. Um, that's, that's, that's the winning combo. You know, everywhere you look, it's beautiful and there's a lot of heart in this community. You know, even, uh, what you refer to as the pitchfork crowd, there's a lot of heart in that crowd also.
I'll give you that. Yeah.
Yeah. They, they care about the neighborhood and what the neighborhood's about. They care about making sure it's a safe neighborhood and you know, they're, they're here to say that we want a place that is, um, really nice and livable. And that's, that's a cool part of what caring is about.
I think both sides can, can agree to that. So I like that one.
That's what I'm about, finding those places of agreement.
So, so what is it again? You're about balance and like practicality and listening to both sides and coming up with a solution that works for everyone? Wow. What a concept.
In this day and age, you don't flick on the news to find that, but I'm trying in my neighborhood.
This is the news now, man. Podcast, I promise. How would you leverage that strength? So how would you leverage the, excuse me, the beauty and the heart and the compassion, um, to, to, uh, improve Pacifica?
Well, that compassion is where we find solutions to complex issues like the RVs ultimately, um, by finding those solutions where everybody can get behind it. But, um, it's also about the beauty is, you know, where business comes into play. Cause it, it's just kind of recently that we're not quite as unfounded gem as we used to be. And, um, as we, we're bringing people in more and more, you know, we need to have places set up where they can spend their money. That's where Palmetto comes into play. And so we already have that beauty going. Now we just need to be conducive towards people coming into certain areas of our beauty to reinforce monetarily what we are trying to cultivate here. You know, it's also an asset being this close to San Francisco. It's out of the way on the one hand and close enough on the other. And if we have a hotel down there at the end of Palmetto and they can hop there and stay the night and go to the city during the day and come back in the evening and have a restaurant break here and, uh, maybe check in with one of our, um, local dispensaries.
And breakfast or lunch restaurants?
A shout out to Fog.
Yeah. There's so many dispensaries is that.
Maybe more at the restaurant. Yes.
Maybe I gotta bring a, maybe I'll do a breakers pop up on Palmetto if you keep talking about it enough. What have you, what have Pacificans, I think we already covered this, so we can probably skip this one, but like, what did you hear was right? And what did you hear has been improved? So we, we went on to three issues, but is there anything positive that you heard when you're knocking on doors? That people were like saying is going right and they wanted you to, hopefully when you get on council, continue to do?
That's interesting because you know, you don't usually knock on a door saying, so what is it that you think I shouldn't do anything about right now? No, but you know, it's, it's making sure that what we have, um, stays, you know, and that, that gets back to that premise of the beauty of living in Pacifica and making sure that our hillsides are preserved and.
Not going too far over into the, the Atherton light, um, dream, I guess like that.
Yeah. Um, yeah. You know, that's.
Balance.
What we're doing right, you know, most things we are doing right and that's, that's the reality of it. And we have these places that we, we need a little work, but most things we're doing it right. Most places, people love the resource center and the work that we do at the resource center. And know that we need to augment that so that we can do the full job to, you know, um, start addressing our portion of a regional issue. You know, that the fact that we all get to live in one of the most beautiful places on earth is, is what we're doing right by preserving that for, uh, not just ourselves, but generations to come. And, um, being on the right track in terms of, uh, you know, even staffing, you know, there are a lot of positive interactions people have with the city staff. It's just a matter of, you know, being able to free up their, their time, that resource, that valuable resource we have so that we can augment that even further.
So yeah, I guess it's like, keep up the good work, keep, keep Pacifica beautiful, but also like, we got some work to, uh, you know, to improve a few things. You did bring up like the dispensaries and stuff. Uh, so in the last 10 years, a lot has changed in Pacifica, but like, what kind of trends have you seen? You know, besides us legalizing, uh, dope sales as the boomers call it. But yeah, any other trends that you've seen in Pacifica that are pretty unique to us? And then how do you think you would be able to promote those trends to help?
Oh, well, um, yeah, like the, we have, um, two breweries. Um, I'm not sure if Seahorse is up and running it as a brewery, but, uh,
Yeah, I don't think so.
Pedro Point Brewery and the Pacifica Brewery, we have a distillery, the trip distillery, you know, craft brew, craft spirits. Um, and also restaurants in general, we got the hot pot up, uh, north from where I am.
Two hot pots now. Well, the other was not open yet, but and I haven't tried it. Yeah, there are more restaurants.
Hot pot either. I'm excited to though. We should do that. Once, once we feel safe.
When we celebrate your win, we'll.
Sounds good to me.
If you win, it'll be your, my treat. If you lose, it'll be my treat.
I'd be honored. Thank you. Roslyn, there you go. Roslyn makes the best frigging bread on the planet as far as I'm concerned. I have sourdough and just, not just bread too. The, have you ever had their avocado toast?
Uh, no.
Oh.
I'm a bad millennial. I didn't have. I wake up so late. By the time I'm over there, like I just get like a chocolate croissant and a T-shirt and I'm out.
Cookies, cookies.
I'm trying to lay off the gluten, but I guess it's in the, it's in the, uh, it's in the, it's in.
I keep forgetting that when I talk to you, I apologize.
I forget it too. That, that's why.
Roslyn, the hot pot, um, uh, Red Eye Grill is up there. I love going to the Red Eye Grill, um, Mediterranean.
Manor's coming up a lot because my mommy's known the pet store there. That's the hot pot place now and all the rats are gone. Don't worry. But, uh, yeah, like Manor looks good. It doesn't look as good as, you know, everywhere else, but, uh, yeah, I'm excited.
Coming together a little bit too. We have masala up there, masala up there in Lindemar. We have some decent Indian for, uh, in our, my neck of the woods for the first time that I can remember. You know, we, so it's like food is booming all over the place.
So you're seeing, so the, yeah, let's just recap. So the, the trends have been obviously the, uh, marijuana sales, the dispensaries, the breweries, the restaurants. And I think that's why we need to help them as much as we can to, to survive COVID. It's, it's been a struggle. I'm not gonna lie. I'm gonna have my dad on one of these episodes and we're, we're gonna pull back some layers, but, um, yeah.
Looking forward to getting back to breakers.
Exactly. How do you, uh, how do you propose you can, you can promote those trends, um, to help Pacifica?
I, I start with me visiting these places and, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm, by the way, I'll disabuse us now. I'm not a big pot smoker. I do on occasion inhale.
People are surprised at me and you don't smoke weed, by the way. We totally look alike, you know?
I, I, I need my mind in tip top shape and I know my mind and I, every rare once in a while I, I take a hit or two and that's.
Yeah.
And that being said, when I take that hit or two, you know, I go to lit and I get my thing and, you know, that'll last me for the next five years, but.
I still have a pack of like CBD gummies when they first opened. So it's like, yeah, they definitely last if you don't use them too much, but.
But I totally hit up the trip distillery every Friday night when we're not in COVID land, you know? I, I just got to have a beer at the Pedro Point Brewery, um, the other day for the first time in months. I love going to the Pacifica brewery because they have food, you know, even if I'm in.
Yeah. They have outdoor seating and they have the food. I mean.
Yeah.
We gotta help them. They just opened too, which is like insane. I couldn't imagine opening a restaurant, uh, during, you know, a couple of months before a pandemic. So they, this is their first year. So yeah, I've been, I've been going there a lot.
So Vaughn does not know how to make bad food. So I, I adore eating, but that's, that's it is, you know, I, I try and visit all these places, uh, when I can. And then I, I can speak from experience. When I say Sylvan doesn't know how to make bad food, it's only because I've tried just about everything on that menu. And I'm here to say, you know, and, um, it's easy for me to speak out on business when I, I've been there and I, I know how amazing it is. And that's, you know, and if I haven't visited yet, you know, I'm here to encourage people to visit. And then we have an economic development committee and, um, like, uh, Helen of Pacifica Brewery, like I say, I was on vacation one week when I was knocking on doors. And that was my treat to myself was hanging out at the restaurant during that week. Cause I seldom get to visit because my weeks are very busy and they're closed by the time I'm off work. So that was my treat to myself and how I enjoyed the vacation part of my vacation. Not that I didn't enjoy walking, knocking on doors, just a little more work, uh, like a nature. And, you know, I was talking to her and she was telling me this idea that like the restaurateurs get together maybe and, uh, kind of form a, a city group of their own to try and tell the city council how best to help them. And I ran this, um, idea by Kathleen Courtney, who's on economic development committee. And she was like, yeah, that's a great idea. You should totally hook the, hook them up with us so that we can try and help them.
I think I told her the same thing. So that's cool. I'm proud of you.
Yeah.
Like you don't gotta recreate these groups. Like there's already, you know, skeletons of these things that could use a few good folks, you know, and restaurateurs. So.
And so for me, like taking these ideas as though they're new to me, because they are, I'm not a restaurateur.
Yeah.
You know, and learning and growing and connecting people with each other so that, you know, they can tell me how best for me to help them promote.
Totally.
And they already are, and I'm doing what I can to connect those dots, you know, already without being there.
Yeah. I'm glad that you brought up the economic development committee because that's, that's one of those positions where the city is, you know, the staff is doing double time. So it really is up to the liaisons and the folks on there. And then, you know, they're connected to the chamber. And so it's stuff that's already in play that a lot of people don't know about. So, um, yeah, I pop into those museums where I keep in touch with Archie too. So, uh, once I get, again, once I get breakers back open, I'll know it worked for me and I know it can work for, for other restaurants. And I'm like you, I care and, and I've been doing the work. So we can definitely help. Um, okay, great. So just, uh, how to help Pacifica is support local, go there, encourage your friends to go there and Tiger does it and you can too. Uh, how could the city council help community groups find more funding inside Pacifica and inside San Mateo County and the state? I know we talked a little about money, but, uh, that was another question that someone submitted. And they asked, well, about like, you know, how are you gonna build good relationships with places, you know, over the hill, as people say?
Sure. And that's, that's a part of, uh, what my job will be when getting to councils, uh, research, research, research. And a part of, you know, by being a city council person, then that connects me with the ability to reach out to county and reach out to state. You know, I'm coming in it with a, a relationship with Don Horstley to the point that he's willing to endorse me easily, you know? Hey, Don, you want to endorse me? Sure. No problem. You know, David Canepa knows my name. I've met with him on occasion and, you know, I, I didn't feel like my relationship with him was strong enough to reach out this time. But, you know, since that moment, um, you know, I know what my connection with him in it is and how easy that will be to make. And so already I, I have my foot in the door when it comes to counties. So I'm ready to go in on that level. And it'll be about connecting folks to whatever those county resources are and the state resources are. You know, I talked to Jerry Hill about an endorsement. He knows me. He's been seeing me around for years. Whenever he comes over to Mizetti's.
Yeah. You're the Java Jerry guy.
Yeah, exactly. You know, I'm connected with Kevin Mullen on his Instagram. And, you know, the last time I saw Kevin at the, um, Aloney, uh, celebration at, um, at the community center, you know, we connect there and, you know, it's one thing to like connect with somebody on Instagram as Instagram friends. It's another thing where it's like, yeah, I know you, you're my Instagram friend. I'm like, cool. Like, okay. So there's real life going on behind Instagram.
Yeah. Isn't that weird where it's like, it's IRL, you know, in real life. And it's like, that's cool. Yeah. But a lot of stuff's happening, uh, on Instagram. It goes down in the DM, you know? So hopefully I'll try to get this on Instagram.
Again, in, in the interest of full transparency, I did not get their endorsements this round, but that's not to say that I don't, um, have connections there already.
Exactly.
And I'm looking forward to, you know, deepening those connections and creating real connections and, um, showing these guys, well, you know, I, I've been connected with you tentatively for a reason and I'm ready to, you know, make that a strong connection while we figure out how to work together to, you know, I, I'm here to facilitate Pacifica being a piece of the state level puzzle or the county level puzzle. And what that means is, is I'm facilitating those relationships on that level, then I'll be able to say, hey, what's the resource I can offer this person looking, uh, for, for, uh, what they need in order to be successful here in my community? So that, then I can reciprocate that by making them can, or helping them to contribute to. then I can reciprocate that by making them can, or helping them to contribute to the bigger picture. So it's, it's all about reciprocity. It's all about connection. It's all about, you know, making those connections and understanding how reciprocity on the most fundamental level works.
And so you're already, you're already working on those. And like honestly, I don't think endorsements are that important because it's the relationships, it's the work and, uh, you know, and you put in the work. So that's cool that Don Horstly was able to do that. Cause I, I, you know, I think people like him. So yeah, and then as far as like Daly City, San Bruno, Half Moon Bay, like what's, what's a couple of ideas to kind of like unite with them and, you know, how, how would we, how would you, there's probably, you already have some relationships, but yeah, how do we get relationships there? And then maybe figure out a way to get people to stop through, you know, Pacifica on their way to either, either one of those spots. Like, how would you build a relationship with, like Daly City? They're like our neighbors, but do they care about Pacifica? Does Pacifica care about Daly City?
Well, we should.
Good answer.
Yeah. Um, it's well, so, uh, some of these cities that you're mentioning, you know, we're already sharing like, um, basically in agreement with our fire service with them. And it's a mutual, again, reciprocal relationship. And, you know, with our police, again, it's a, a matter of if there's a thing that happens here that we don't have the resources on hand to deal with, our chief makes one phone call and immediately it comes, comes into play and they just send the resources we need. And we send the resources when they need it. Um, so a lot of that already is happening, functioning on that level. Um, my work with the Resource Center, uh, as you know, um, lends itself to, because we now have, uh, uh, people who are kind of, uh, based with the Resource Center, but who are doing work up and down the entirety of the coast.
That's true. That's a good point. They, uh, the Research Center is covering the coast and Half Moon Bay as well. So that, that's a, that's a good, that's a good level to start.
Right.
Cause you're gonna have to get to know the business. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll be able to, you know, say, hey, I was involved with this thing and connect with people on that level and, and it's, it's all about finding, you know, those places where already I've got the thing going and going from there. And then meanwhile, you know, there's going to be city meetings. And I'm, I'm very interested in, you know, going into those, uh, uh, CCAG, uh, Bay Area and Bay Area government meetings and.
Yeah.
County Association of Governments and Bay Area Association and all these acronyms. Uh, but you know, I, I imagine at some point I might speak in front of these people. And then they might have a sense of, of me from just the speaking and especially when COVID is through, I'll be able to meet people in person. And I'm a fairly personable person, I think.
Yeah. Me and you never stayed up on the walls, you know, at these events. So, um, yeah, uh, I can't wait to see what happens. And I know you're, I know win or lose, you're, you're honestly, you're just gonna keep on doing this. So that, that's like what's so cool. And that's, that's one of the main reasons why, uh, I wanted to interview you. I didn't have time to get to all the other candidates. Cause like honestly, just life is freaking crazy right now. Um, but that, that was really important for me is because I want to, this to be like a snapshot in time. Because I think you and I are, are gonna do wonderful things for this community or I hope we are. Um, and so this is cool to kind of like, this is, this is the, the beginning of a new chapter for you. And it's not written yet, but, uh, I hope, I hope it goes the way you want. Um, what challenges do you see facing Pacifica? What are your plans for addressing them? I feel like we already talked about that, but is there anything else you want to say? We need, yeah, we need to, we need to make up for some lost money and then.
No, it's, you know, we, uh, again, getting back to the RVs, cause it is a thing. We need to see how, um, the, the new law shakes out and then go from there. That, that's part and parcel to a bigger issue with homelessness, which, um, is something that I'm, I think I'm uniquely situated to, uh, maybe take a stab at. And, uh,
Totally.
We need to look at those homeless issues now outside of RVs also because they are there.
Good point. It's not just oversized vehicles, everyone. There, there are people living in all kinds of things. Uh, you know, we know a lot of people here and they're not all the ones that people are complaining about. There's, there's those unseen folks that are struggling just as much. And there's folks who are working and are struggling. What? Half of Pacifica now, uh, is eligible for some service. And I imagine it's gonna get worse because of COVID.
I, you know, I, I imagine it's going to get better because we have the ability to, to bring in the.
I like your positivity. Go ahead and finish that thought. So it's gonna get worse. It is worse. There's, you know, we're seeing like 10 times the amount of people need help. However.
However, you know, again, there's a lot of heart and, um, and it's going to take more than heart. It's going to take community coming together and figuring out what the solutions are. And that's, you know, it's, um, we, we do have the second highest homeless population in San Mateo County behind Redwood City. And, you know, with the RVs to a point, we can legislate away because there's a safety thing we can do. But again, we can outlaw homelessness and people are camping out on the, the beach amongst other places. And the solution to that is we start, and this is important because it's the way we start any process that might be contentious in our community the right way. With an open Brown Act compliant meeting amongst the community where we sit around those tables, you know, God help us if we have to do it by Zoom, but, um, you know, hopefully this is a step or two past, uh, COVID, which is, uh, and we sit around these tables and we talk about what we see the issues as being, and we do this with the data in front of us. We get good sol, solid, sound county data. We talk about the issues, what we're seeing and what we think solutions might be. We bring all that to a city level, uh, study session. And we talk about, okay, these are the conversations we had. This is the data we've compiled. These are possible solutions. And then from that study session, we give direction and then staff, you know, starts finalizing what we can do into the things that we're gonna do. And that's the process to address it. And because I've spent the last, you know, half decade of my life on the board of directors of the Resource Center and the last two decades, the last two years of my life as the vice president of the board, I'm really looking forward to taking some of that experience and using it to start these, this difficult conversation process. Um, so that's a, a place where we have an opportunity. And outside of that, that comes back to, uh, money after that. And again, Palmetto is where I'm looking right now.
Yeah. Getting those, so it's like helping the most vulnerable, helping the folks stay housed, getting the businesses going. I mean, it's, it's a tall, it's a tall order, but, um, again, it's Pacifica. It's, we have our own little community. Everyone says that the people is like the most important part, but like, let, let's actually show it. Let's put some, it's not just about caring. Like you said, it's about action and, and, and you're doing it, man. So in a weird way, I'm doing it too now. And then I'm just, like I said, we're just starting these new chapters. So it's gonna be interesting what happens in the next couple of days. Um, I got a couple more questions and then we can wrap it up. I think we're at like hour and 15. I feel like Joe Rogan now. We're going like three. Do you need a bathroom break or anything? You feeling good?
No, I'm feeling great.
Okay. Should we, should we make up a sponsor? Like cut to an ad or something? I don't know. Maybe we'll, we'll sneak it in there, uh, afterwards. Um, okay. So, uh, one question, this is a good one. Going back to your, your Safeway. Uh, so you, you work in Lindemar and that's owned by Kimco. So like, what is your opinion on Kimco and their style of ownership of our shopping centers? Do you have any thoughts to share on that?
Um, getting back to the subject of heart and caring, I feel like Kimco could rise to the occasion of, um, the, the, the heart and caring in our community a little more often. I think they could put a little bit more care into the way they do things, but I also appreciate that they have a business model and, um, that's a reality. So, um, you know, I, I have the pleasure of, uh, living practically, uh, the way I work most of my life, uh, in their, their, their space. And, you know, I, on a daily basis, I don't have, uh, that many complaints about them. It seems like they are starting to fill up the spaces, um, in the Lindemar Shopping Center more frequently these days. It's really hard for me because there are certainly some things I could criticize about them and because I might be entering into, um, a next step where I could actually form a relationship with them that could be conducive toward what's best for the city. Uh, I don't feel like being particularly hypercritical right now. That's not to say I don't have serious critiques. But I, I want to get that relationship up off on the right, right foot if I'm about to begin that relationship. So.
I think that's a good move because you obviously work there and you have the tools, but you don't, you don't want to blow your, blow your chance before. It's about timing. So.
And, you know, the people who work at Kimco are human beings also. And, you know, it's, there's, there's always those who, um, don't quite know how to cultivate, um, an awareness of the fullness of their potential.
That was a mouthful. I like.
But, um, but you know, overall, um, I'm grateful to have the job I do. And overall, the next part of the job I want to do is cultivating a relationship with them that's going to be more conducive toward the city. And, um, that's, that's my sincere hope. And if they, um, irritate me enough in my next step, then I'll be happy to rail against them. Cause.
Yeah. You might have to, you know, let a little, a little frustration out, but in, in all, in all in good fun and trying to get, get stuff, uh, done around here for, for your constituents sake.
On the right foot.
Here's another hot topic to deal with a shopping center. What are your thoughts on, I know this isn't your district, but you should care. What are your thoughts?
About all Pacifica.
Good job. What are your thoughts on the beach parking and/or the parking problem at Pedro Point? Um, yeah. Do you have thoughts on that? You want, want to share?
Yeah. Parking problem at Pedro Point, um, you know, it's, so that parking lot, um, if we didn't have a bunch of people flocking to Pacifica regularly to surf, that parking lot might actually be able to accommodate that shopping center quite nicely. But then people are looking for the free parking and that apparently is where it is. Or even when the, um, paid parking is overflowing, that there is an overflow lot. Or, um, you know, they park at the Safeway parking lot too. It's just our parking lot's a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And Pedro Point is such a small, um, community in terms of parking space already, that then if that parking lot starts overflowing, it starts overflowing into the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, um, really, you know, Pedro Point could do with a parking solution, which it's not an easy thing. And any development at Pedro Point at all is something that isn't necessarily desirable in that community. Um, you know, it, it, it's easy to say, oh, put a parking structure there, but that's an eyesore that then, you know.
Yeah. That, that neighborhood doesn't want anything that isn't already there or is gonna make parking worse or the experience worse.
Point is really difficult because it's, it's really a tight little community and, you know, it's, it's already tight. And so anytime you put more in, it gets tighter. And, um, I, I will be there to do my absolute best to try and find those solutions, uh, as best as I can. And, you know, I, I start with the premise that I, I care about the reality that they're all in this tight little space and I need to hear that loudly. You know, that's, that's where I begin.
Is it true? There, there was like a, a permit thing placed in, I'm gonna say Pedro Point because that's how you're supposed to say it, right? And I heard like some locals like thrashed it and tore it down. So for like a while you were able to pay? Yeah, I know. Isn't that crazy?
You know, so, okay. So there was this guy who was like walking around in the parking lot for a while with like his little thing and he would issue tickets, I guess.
Oh, so that's, that's, that, that person is, uh, the landlord does that, but, uh, grocery outlet doesn't, doesn't want to tow. They don't want to issue tickets, but they get so many complaints. But, uh, one of the solutions was they put up like a parking permit thing where you would put in like money and then you get a little thing. And then some locals like thrashed it down. Like you can't charge. So.
I've ever heard of that.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Look into it, but that's what I heard. That's what happened. So grocery outlet, you know, they, they try, but then when they talk to people and the people are just like, oh, whatever. And then it's just like, they leave them no choice, you know? So, uh, and then now you got Orange Theory Fitness. Like there's stuff happening over there. Um, it's just unfortunate that there's not enough parking, but I, yeah, I'm seeing people park weirdly. Like even up by the ace, like up on the tracks and stuff, but it's like a good problem to have because people are coming here, but, um, you know.
It's a great problem to have unless you live there.
Or trying to survive with your bit or run a business. Like, yeah, I guess live there too. So you got the business owners, you got the community, and then you got the folks, you know, the clientele coming in and they're all part of the same ecosystem, but all have different needs. So good luck, bud.
Yeah, thanks.
More development questions. I guess this is a big topic in District Four. Are you aware of the, uh, plans for the Otsetts School site? Um, a lot of Park Pacifica people have concerns about that. Please share your thoughts. And I think this is, you were telling me, or if I'm correct, it's like the, is it school housing or is it affordable housing? Or I thought.
Yeah. Well, that's the plan is that the school district wants to make it affordable housing for, uh, staff. And, um, uh, so it would be workforce housing. And we're at a place where I, I think they're still trying to get it off the ground, but nothing's come before planning commission. So.
What's left to debate about it then? I don't get it. If it was already approved.
So it, it hasn't come before planning commission yet.
Oh, like the actual building and implementation there?
Right. So this is a thing that the school district wants to do with their land. Um, but then there is an approval process through planning that, uh, needs to happen. And they haven't, um, gone in for those permits yet, I don't think. And they're trying to figure out how to make it work. And then I don't know if, um, their approach is going to be to try and issue a bond or something in order to build it or.
Similar to like what they did with Jefferson Union, like up by, okay, cool. And, and some people are against just more people back there. Would that be the only argument against affordable housing for teachers?
You know, I, I, I did not talk to my constituents a great deal about their overwhelming concerns, uh, about whether or not, now there were some people I talked to who were absolutely for it. Yeah. But that's, that's what I got so far is that, you know, I, I did not come up against much resistance for workforce housing for, uh, teachers and staff. You know, folks who work at schools. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we'll throw another development at you since you're Mr. Commissioner Big Stick. What are, what are your thoughts on development at Lower Frontierland Park? I don't know what they're talking about, but there's been interest in making it a BMX bike park or a dog park. Do you, can you, can you let the listeners and me know what that's all about?
I, I've heard, I've kind of heard the dog park thing. I think that the resolve to that was Sanchez, uh, more than anything. But there's a push to make it into a bike park and I think that that's a great idea. Um, you know, there's, there's this little subculture in Pacifica bikers. Not motorcycle bikers, but bicycle biker, BMX bikers. And.
Yeah. Cause they got the shop back there and there's a lot of BMXers and I don't even know if they're allowed in the skate park, but they're there and they, they have a right to hit the ramps, I guess, the jumps, the bulls.
Yeah. Well, I, I think the idea is, um, you know, I, I imagine they're gonna find the money to, you know, create the, the bike park that they want up in Frontierland. And it's a matter of the city, um, permitting it the right way and making it so that they can do that. And I think it's a great idea. I think it's fabulous.
So you're, it's official. You're for the bike park at Frontierland Park.
I am very much for the bike park.
Nice. Me too.
Outdoor recreation in a wholesome way.
Oh yeah. I guess especially now during COVID, let's get some more outdoor stuff.
Yeah. Where we're using, uh, we're totally under utilizing this, this great piece of, you know, that, that was the, uh, the park that I liked to go to when I was a little kid. Cause I was on with the slide, you know?
I don't, I don't remember that. I went to the Boys and Girls Club, but I don't, I didn't spend a lot of time in Frontierland Park, but was there just like a kick ass slide in, in that?
Yeah. It was, you know, when you're a little guy, that was a big slide and tire swing and.
The, the upper part's like nicer now too.
The upper part's much nicer these days. Back then it was, uh, a bit more boring comparatively. There's like a seesaw there.
I remember the seesaw. It was like a big piece of wood with like splitters, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. And you can never, well, I could never find somebody to be on the other side of it. No one wanted to.
I would have played with you if I would have known you, man. I'm sorry. I think I just used to like catch little caterpillars or like, there's just bugs on the seesaw. So I don't know, but.
Now there's a great thing up there in, uh, Frontierland for the little ones. Uh, but back then it was, it was kind of boring for me, but the bottom one was where the slide was. But anyway, it's, it's totally.
Is the slide still there or what is there? Oh.
I think.
Actually, I saw something like a tennis court or something, or bocce ball or some, something blue. I saw it on, I don't know. Maybe I'll go check that out.
I don't know.
I'll do the reporting on Frontierland Park. I'll get, I'll get you the answers you need to know. Um, so we're coming up on like an hour and a half, man. And then I think, uh, no one's listening anymore. But if you are, thank you so much. Um, did we, I, I, I had another question. Someone wanted to know like what your experience just in general has been like on planning commission and how that might help. But if we already covered that, then we can skip that, I guess. But is there any like last, like, how can your experience on planning commission help you, help city council, help you be on city council and help the city?
Yeah. Well, planning commission is a ju, uh, judiciary body. Um, you know, we're, we're judging things. We're taking, uh, what the law is and interpreting, uh, interpreting it, whether or not what's before us is legal and, um, what should be done based on the law. Whereas city council is a legislative body. They make the laws. So my role on planning commission, um, helps me to understand what the laws of Pacifica are. Not all of them, you know, I haven't suddenly become a, a legal repository. That's what we have city attorney for. But I understand a lot more now what the laws are, how they work. Um, and so when I get to city council, you know, it, it then facilitates, uh, a capacity that's heightened to be able to tweak a law if a law needs to be tweaked or work with a law, because I understand better how the law works. And it also gives me a much better physical understanding of what development means in Pacifica, how it works. And, and what the process is, you know, it, it's easy for me to say, yes, we're gonna have development up Palmetto, Palmetto. But, um, it, since I have that background in planning, I actually know what it means when I say that. You know, I, I know that it's going to take a little time. I know that, you know, we have to, um, we have to incentivize developers developing there the right way. Um, and so I, I have insight into what that means because of my time on planning. So when I say, you know, this is what we're gonna do to get money. I mean, I know what this long elaborate invested process is so that the end result can be the thing where you drive your car down the road. You know, and, and because I've been involved in this way, I'm not coming in with nothing. I have at least some insight in how city works. And that's, that's, that's why I'm. I have at least some insight into how city works. And that's, that's, that's why I'm asking.
I think that makes all the difference. So if, if for anything, like Tiger knows how the city works. And if you want him to work for the city, you gotta, you gotta vote him in. All right. Yeah. Let's wrap it up. You got two minutes to tell me what I forgot to ask you. Or you have the floor. Is there anything you want to say? Anyone, anyone you want to say hi to or?
Hi mom.
I'll say hi to my mom. She, my mom texted me her Halloween costume and I totally ignored it because we were doing the podcast. So mom, I'm sorry that I left the, left the chat, but you looked like a kick ass lizard. My mom, uh, works at Oceana Market in the pet department now. So.
That's right. I, I go there and I see her and shout out to Oceana Market.
Yeah. What else? Let, let's just do like, uh, this, if I was going to clip this and you're going to tell people to watch Robbie's World, episode one with you on it. And, and what do you want people to know about you that we, we haven't covered in this last hour and a half? Like, yeah, any final words from Tiger Jazz, Twirl's Big Stick?
You know, I, my nature is to be a little bit repetitive, but, um, you know, if you haven't heard it yet, I'm here to be a, a fairly neutral party, um, until I hear the things that tip me in a, a way that I'm inclined to then make my motion or vote. And I'm somebody who has a deep abiding commitment to listening to the entirety of the community, indiscriminately, without fail, listening to every gem from every human being in this place, trying to figure out together how to make it the best thing possible. And then my role, what I want to do is interpret that into some semblance of, this is what it looks like more united than not. This is the thing that's going to be best for the vast majority of our populace. And that's what I'm trying to accomplish. That's what I'm trying to do. I, I got a brain. I got a heart and I'm into process so that we do it the right way. There's nothing worse than having a great idea and watching it fall flat on its face because it's done the absolute worst way possible. That's what inspired me to run to begin with. And that's what I'm looking out for to avoid like the plague. You know, I guess these days you really shouldn't say like, avoid it like the plague, because we haven't been doing the best job of that.
Careful what you wish for.
You know, I'm trying to make sure that we do it the right way. And the right way means that we take a breath in between, we listen to each other in between and we go from there. And, um, and that's what I'm into. And I, I know how to flip a yes or no switch at the end of the day. But before I get to that point, I want to make sure that I've done my due diligence to say, I heard this, I heard this, I heard this. And is there a way to, um, combine it into something that would be amazing for everybody involved? Or is this really the best that we can do? In which case, you know, I'll flip my switch from there.
How can, uh, people get ahold of you if they want to ask more questions? If I do get this out, you know, a day or two before people voted, or where can people find out more about you, your book, your life, your campaign? Where are you sending people to?
Right now I've been sending them to tigerjazzforpacifica.com. T Y G A R J A S, number four, pacifica.com. If you're interested in the book, you can go to tigerjazz.com. Uh, that's, that's a nice, easy one. I've got Facebook presence. Um, it's easy to find me there. If you want to, uh, call my campaign, um, in which I, I'm the campaign. So I'll be picking up the phone.
How do we get ahold of the Tiger Jazz staff? What, yeah. If someone, yeah, I want someone to call you. Can they text or just call?
Yeah, they can text. They can call. It's four one five, two one four, one four three five. It's four one five, two one four, one four three five. Um, you're welcome to call me. And usually I, I will answer you after I get home from work and I will answer.
Yeah. Go see him at Safeway. Go, go support your economy, buy, buy some vegetables, ask them some hot button questions and then go vote.
You can totally come by Safeway. I'm, I'm there. I'm a check stand locked usually a good portion of the day. I am a captive audience and happy to listen.
And not hard to find. So thank you, Tiger, for the time. Uh, I didn't know how much I was going to enjoy this conversation. And again, I can't believe it's freaking Halloween, but, uh, you know, I finally have my podcast that I've always dreamed about. And thank you for, uh, being the first guest. And I will do my damnedest to try to get this out and spread it to as many people as possible. And yeah, best of luck, man. Thank you for taking the time. I'm going to hit, uh, end recording, but stay there so we can just do a final little wrap up. But yeah, thank you again for, for everything, man. I'm grateful for your friendship and I, I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Robbie. I'm grateful to be on the inaugural broadcast. Thank you.
All right. How to figure this shit out?